I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Damon.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wogly.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Mr. Canwisheer.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
And Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Please rise and join me.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And are there any questions regard regarding evening's agenda? If not, I will take the motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
A motion by Ayers, second by Canwisheer, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do that. I do ask you to come to the podium and state your name and affiliation with the district. And if you could be careful to refrain from using specific names. And you have three minutes. And go ahead.
My name is Anna Marie Gania, and I am a parent of a student. First of all, I'd like to say that the sound is really bad when you are at home and try to watch it. I can see you folks, but I don't understand anything that you're saying. So that makes me to come here. If we could somehow fix it. I think it has to do with maybe the microphone is too far from everybody. So I can hear you all the time.
Uh-oh.
You have a stronger voice and you know, that's, that's what I wanted to say because I didn't know who to contact about it. So hey, can we work through the sound? So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we will look into that. For sure. Anyone else? Okay? I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name's Aaron Gray. I have two children that go to Pleasant Valley High School. They both also are members of the Piranhas Swim Club. And we've been trying to get meetings with some of the administration to address our concerns with access to the pool to limited ends. So just coming here because I thought it was going to be on the agenda tonight, but I don't know if that's being addressed at a later place. Do you know anything about that?
There will be address, we will address that. I'm out with the A D or activities director today.
Okay.
And I'll be following up with the other group and we'll set a meeting in the future.
Alright.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
I got a phone call as well from one of the Piranhas families and I told them I'd get back to them at the end of the week and I was, I have a phone call into the athletic director as well regarding, I think, the concerns that you're talking about.
Yeah. So I'm sure, I'm sure they're all addressing all of the salient points there. So I won't rehash them here and waste your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, I'm going to move on to board members. If you have anything you'd like to share tonight, I'll start with Director Smith.
I covered the other topic and I can pass for the night. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Director Canwisheer.
First, apologies to poor Leland who had to deal with the massive flood this morning at the high school. I did get some feedback from folks in my area of the district indicating the only thing they got were emails, which most people don't check in the mornings. So there were more than a few kids en route to school or actually arrived at school and to discover there was a delay. So if someone could look into that, we did get the emails. I know we have that, but we didn't seem to get a call or text. But maybe there's some other thing that wasn't done by my family and others that we should have considered. The second thing I've got for tonight is, for those of you unaware, the Department of Education convenes a group of science-oriented folks from around the state. Let university professors, school teachers, actual public citizens participate in this board. We revised society standards, which are the basis for public education in Iowa relative to science. Those got submitted to the Department of Education and then the Department of Education decided to revise those standards and remove the terms evolution and climate change from those standards for unknown reasons. They have not responded to those requests for why those changes were made. So I'm going to bring this up in case anyone's unaware of that. And the comment period will continue through February 1st. If you are concerned about that, I will be sharing the I P R article. There's actually just a, I have a public radio article on that today. I'll share that just so you have a basis where the standard is and I'll share how the feedback can be given to the Department of Education. That's what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Wogly.
First, I want to congratulate Mr. Hyatt. And as you guys noticed in our last more meeting, he has accepted a new position starting next year for superintendent of Northwood, Kensett, and St. Ansker School Districts, combined districts. And so I want to congratulate you on that. And I think it just shows your leadership and your testament and dedication to student achievement and just public education in general. So congratulations, congratulations on that. And I know that you will, as you've done here and in this community, I know that you will make a meaningful impact over there as well. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to remind everybody in our Northern Scott District that there is a election tomorrow for Senate District, State Senate District 35. And one of the candidates is our very own Mr. Mike Zimmer. So for those people who are listening, please remember to vote tomorrow if you live in that district.
Thank you. Director Wheeler.
I have nothing tonight.
Director Ayers.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Director Kunkel.
Hopefully I'm not taking anything you might say.
Okay, if you are.
But I was able to attend the Pleasant Valley Junior High Science Fair and it was phenomenal. Very interesting projects. They gave them a general guideline of a problem they could solve. But even within that, you could see the kids' interests because they were able to go off into the different ideas that they had. And one of the first ones I was able to listen to was about energy wasted and how we could try to be better at conserving that energy. And they talked about when you make coffee, how much energy is wasted. And so his project, he used hot coffee to charge a battery. And he was saying, if we could work that technology more, you might be able to charge your phone while drinking your hot coffee. And it's just little ideas like that that can make, you know, big impacts. And to see their brains working in that direction was really neat. So just great job to the teachers that really were passionate about getting that started. And to the administration who sees teachers' passions and say, go for it. So that was great. The other thing was I was able to go to Iowa State on Friday to see the ethics bowl competition, which was very enlightening. I had no idea what that entailed. And it was great. The students that were presenting there, they had been working since early fall on researching these different areas of questions to answer. And they had to present their claims. They didn't know which case they would get, but they had to present their claims and come up with counterclaims. And I thought PV just did a phenomenal job. They were organized. They worked together well. They were well-spoken. They were confident. And I could just see all the hard work these teachers pour into them coming to light. So it was fantastic. So just wanted to share with you guys. I was laughing on the way here because I'm like, I probably could talk about an hour about all the great things happening.
Thank you. And, Ms. Damon, do you have any comments?
I have nothing.
I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Ms. Zen?
Nothing else.
Mr. Hyatt.
I have, I have two things. I would, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you for that congratulatory message. Bittersweet is not even the right word. With regard to the prospective move, which will be officially, it's pending board approval on February 13th, just to be transparent about that aspect of it. And I'm thrilled to, to serve those communities and so very grateful and feel blessed to have been here for the past two decades minus serving in a different capacity with the A E A. It's all about the people and I'm grateful for the service I've been able to do. And with, and that's where I'll transition to the celebration to share, speaking of the people, our, our kids, our staff, just as we hit this mid-year benchmark with FAST, which is one of the biggies, if you will, as far as our, our screening with literacy, very good preliminary unofficial data coming in, in the way of, first of all, you hit, our, our school report card consists of various healthy indicators. And healthy indicator one is, is what I like to refer to as low fruit. We expect to complete 95% or more of our screenings with FAST, which is a fluency. We do the C B M, a one-minute read, and look for fluency in our kids. And it's a screener. So that's great that we hit that healthy indicator and that will have a, a positive correlation with our, our school report cards. More important than that is the growth that the kids are showing. And what's impressive about this is not only that our district has gone up, but each of the six buildings have gone up. You'll be hard pressed. In fact, I haven't found a district yet with multiple elementary schools in the state where all of the buildings have hit healthy indicator number three. And not only are we preliminarily hitting it, but each of the school buildings have increased their marks in that area, the percentage of students who are hitting that by two to seven percent today unofficially. We'll get the official data out before you when it, when it comes in. But huge kudos to our students for their hard work, to our teachers for their hard work, our administrators for supporting that work, keeping this out in front, you know, keeping fidelity to the personalized reading plans that were a part of the new House File 201618. Just a great celebration to look at this mid-year.
Thanks for that great news. Mrs. Damon, did you have anything?
I have a couple of events to recognize from the junior high. The first is the junior high SEMA Honor Band. Congratulations to the 18 students who auditioned on Saturday 11th and were accepted. Mrs. Damon will include the names in the minutes. And then also congratulations to Katie Kinzaki, who was selected for the state level I B A Honor Band, and Zimri Dines, who was selected as an alternate. In addition, at the junior high, they had the S E I C D A Honor Choir. Congratulations to our 30 PV junior high students who performed on Thursday, January 16th there. Couple different times throughout the fall, I recognized Sherry Tang for her art accomplishments. And we had a pretty big one come in again and wanted to recognize her. So she had a painting titled Artificially Taking Over that was published in the New York Times recently. This fall, there was a call for artist entries from the New York Times called Teens on Politics Today. And this contest brought in over 1,500 applicants from across the country, as well as applicants from Europe and Asia. And Sherry was one of 19 finalists from across the world. Amazing accomplishment.
One of her paintings is in the display case right now.
Thank you. And then just to add on to what Director Kunkel mentioned, our PV ethics bowl teams did wonderful. They placed first, second, and third on Friday's state competition. And the three teams only had one loss in the entire tournament in the final round, which was to another PV team. So they will be participating in the regional playoff on February 12th. And my last item is to recognize our large groups speech. On Saturday, we had 14 teams compete at the district contest. Of the 14 entries, we received 13 Division One and one Division Two ratings. So the events receiving the Division One will move on to the state competition, which is in two weeks. So congratulations to the students. That's it?
Move on too fast. And Mr. Struz.
First of all, Mike Kleensmith is home ill today, so he will not be. That's why he's not at the board meeting tonight. Going back and talking about this morning, first of all, some thank yous that go out to some people. First of all, one of our food service, Mary Bunce, she arrives at work at about 4:30 every single morning, just getting ready for cafeteria work that has to happen. And she emailed Corey Gamble, our director of food service, who immediately called me. So by 4:45 this morning, we realized that we had a water pipe that had broke in front of the high school. It's located right in front of the high school in this, underneath the sidewalk is where it was located. So I arrived here by about 4:55. There was already standing water inside the commons area, inside the main office. And then also, if you know where Officer Fos's offices, there was standing water in there. Good news is that we were able to get everybody here as fast as possible. We were able to get the water sucked up and fans put in there. That's why we were able to have a two-hour late start this morning. If you drive by, they're still trying to fix the pipe right now as we speak. And they're trying to get the water shut off to that pipe so they can tear it out and get it fixed yet tonight. So that was the biggest thing. Overall, the day went very well, minus the, some people not getting a text message or the phone call. We will look into that and see why that transpired. But again, just want to thank, I mean, it was amazing, our custodians, our maintenance team, Leland, our food service, some teachers who came in early who helped out. It was just really all hands on deck. Reagan Mechanical who came in and helped us right away. They were on the spot right away this morning because it's on our property, so it's not an Iowa American situation. We have to deal with it. So they were here right away to help us out. They've been with us all day and still out there now. So there's a whole hands-on group of people to make it possible. So, and again, parents' patience for the parking lot. You can imagine when you take away the one way where everybody gets dropped off and you have a lot of kids coming. But we had extra sheriff officers. We called three N's. We had three sheriffs out there directing traffic. Our administrators were out there. So action plan went into place, worked out very well. So knock on wood, we should be good tomorrow and we will go from there. So. The other thing I would share tonight is all of you know Mary Johnson. Mary Johnson has been with the Pleasant Valley School District for 26 years. I'd say longer than that since she's a Pleasant Valley graduate and went to elementary school and junior high here for us. She will be, she has turned in her letter of resignation, or retirement, I should say, here at the end of this school year. And I just want to read to you, since you know her so well, part of her letter she sent to us reads as follows. Serving the students, families, and staff of Pleasant Valley has been a deeply rewarding experience. I'm especially proud of students who have accomplished their career goals, helping to implement a regional Quad City work-based learning group, and being awarded the A C T College and Career Readiness Champion in 2018. Some of my most rewarding moments are seeing students make connections between what they are doing in school with what comes next after school. And of course, giving back to the district that gave me so much when I was a student, when my children were students in the district. These years have been brought professional growth and professional and personal joy that I will cherish long after I leave. And jealous recognizes Debbie Menke and Mike Zimmer for them when they started this position and how it has grown into what it is today. So thank you to Mary, true Spartan in and out. And she's definitely an advocate for our kids out in the community. So thanks to Mary and her next chapter of her life.
Alright, I will just add real quick here that the Spartan Assembly celebrated Kindness Week last week, I believe it was. And they had an assembly that was for exemplifying positivity, empathy, and respect. And the teachers nominated students in each class that serve as outstanding role models for all of Spartan Nation and exemplify those characteristics. And I just want to recognize those students really quick because I think this is just a really important honor. Congratulations to freshman Laura Macheta and Calvin Richards, sophomores Liazan and Jaden Farmer, juniors Nick Newman and Eddie Clark, and seniors Ella Perry and Jordan Miles. So pretty cool award, being recognized for outstanding kindness and the, and their pivotal role in the betterment of the school. So. Alright, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Alright, we'll move on to approval of bills. I'll take a motion for general fund.
The general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $430,088.50. The statement of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Canwisheer, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition Fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $72,100.32. And payment of invoices is presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Ayers, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices. in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Elementary, Junior, High Activity Fund.
I move the Elementary, Junior, High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wogle, second by Director Wheeler, that Elementary, Junior, High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents and payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wogle, that High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Capital Projects Fund.
I move that Capital Project Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of five thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-nine cents and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Kunkel, that Capital Project Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pepple Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund.
I move the Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eighty thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and six cents and payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Ayers, that Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. All in favor, say aye. Or I'm sorry, are there any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I move the Internal Service Fund one, sixty-six thirty to sixty-six thirty-two, and A C H thirty-two fifty-eight through thirty-two sixty-one, be issued in the total amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-eight cents and payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Wheeler, that Internal Service Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Trust Fund.
I move that Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents and payment of invoice presented.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, that Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we have no other business. So we will move on to substitute teacher pay and teacher coverage. Mr. Struz.
So this evening, I just run, I share with you two ideas that we have put in place for this rest of the school year, starting effectively as of last Tuesday, we started the new semester. First of all, substitute teachers are very important to the continuation of learning that happens in our school every single day. To not have a substitute teacher available, it's very difficult to cover that classroom, what that may look like. So the two proposals we want to share tonight, one has to do with supporting our teachers in the classroom, and second of all is also having, thanking our substitute teacher for what they do every single day. So in your board materials, you have a flow chart, and the flow chart would actually be, the first one, we're talking about our teachers. In the morning, when they are going to be gone for a day, the procedure is that they can sign in the night before, or a week that they know in advance, whatever they're going to be gone for. We have a system they put their names into, and a substitute teacher can come in and grab that position, that they can sign up to be the sub for that position. There are days where someone might get sick overnight or a position's not filled. Susan Parks, who arrives here at six o'clock in the morning to start doing the sub calling, if someone's not filled, by six-thirty, she'd be calling or emailing our building principals saying, here is a position I have that is not filled. How will you cover it inside your building? That's really kind of how it happens in the building. And the principals will run around trying to find something to cover. At the high school, it could end up being they may have a student go to study hall instead of covering the class situation. What we are looking to put in place is when Susan Parks emails the building principals, we have created a spreadsheet that has the master schedule for every single teacher in a building. And whether it's the building principal or their administrative assistant can copy that schedule, they will send it out to the entire staff. And if the staff has a prep period that they could cover that class or cover part of that day, they will sign up, put their name there, and then we will pay them thirty dollars an hour for covering that class. We have never done that before. Typically, a lot of districts have done that where they pay a teacher for covering a class. So whether it is a regular school day, it's a forty-minute to forty-three, forty-four-minute period, or it's an early-out day, two-hour late start, where it's thirty minutes, and a teacher signs up, we'd still pay them that thirty dollars for covering, giving up their prep to cover a class. That's process number one. So we're in the process right now of creating those master sheets where teachers can sign up should we have to utilize that process. They would just simply turn it.
Clarifying point real quick, it's thirty dollars for a period, not an hour. So it's a flat rate amount. It's not, if I'm covering forty minutes, it's one point one. It's, it's just a flat rate of thirty for whatever they cover.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so thirty dollars for that time. When they get done subbing that day, covering that, they get on their administrative assistant in the main office, they fill out what we call a blue sheet. They put your name on there, the date that they filled in. That then gets sent over here and will pay them on their monthly paycheck for whichever period they covered throughout that month, that timeframe. So, thanks to our interest-based problem solving and our teachers and our union, once again, this is a great example how we brought the idea to them. We had a helping committee of teachers and administrators come together, work through the process, what could this look like? So we're all on the page together, and they feel comfortable about how we roll this out. We've committed to keeping this on one of our monthly agendas every time we meet with our teachers in our union. Do you just say, okay, how's it working? What's not going well? What is going well? What changes do we have to make? So again, we'll keep this in the forefront. As anytime we implement something new, there could be changes that have to be made along the way. So we'll continue to work very closely with our teachers on this process. The second one that you see up there is one that, again, this is looking at for our substitute teachers and what they do every single day, whether it is on a daily basis or it's a long-term sub. Someone's on maternity leave and they come in and cover. Basically, for your knowledge, we have always paid someone a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day if they sub, if they're a retired teacher, or they do a nine-week or longer subbing period, they get a hundred and fifty-five dollars. Pretty black and white in terms of that's what it was. Well, one of the things we're looking at when we want to make sure we're enticing subs to want to come in and sub for us because they're very valuable, and we want to make it worth their while and show our appreciation for what they do every single day. So what you have in front of you is a new model that we are proposing that actually honors them for the time they have worked with us. So in this model, what you are seeing, I'll use first semester. We have completed first semester. We have about ten substitute teachers who have subbed more than forty days in the first semester. So what this would do now, starting second semester, we'd, if we approve it tonight, we'd go back to last Tuesday and put it into place. If someone had subbed between forty and ninety days in first semester, every day they sub for us now, second semester, they will be paid a hundred and fifty-five dollars versus the one-twenty-five they would have received before. This would last for the entire semester. And you can see if they did, they filled in thirty to thirty-nine, they'd be paid a hundred and forty-five dollars. The other range, a hundred and thirty-five, and then for zero to nineteen, they're getting a hundred and twenty-five, like we've always paid them in the past. The other change that you will see where it says special situations, we have bumped our retired and P V teachers up to a hundred and sixty-five versus one-fifty-five, which it was before. You'll also note that the nine-plus weeks, which used to be one-fifty-five, we bumped it to one-sixty-five. And the other thing we've heard quite often from our subs, they say if we are starting to sub at four weeks or longer, we're doing lesson plans, we're putting grades in the grade book, they're almost correcting tests, they're doing all those things. Where before, we never had a stipulation for that, they just got the hundred, received a hundred and twenty-five dollars. This would now bump anyone doing a four to eight-week period of time to the one-fifty-five. Once you hit the nine-week, it's one-sixty-five. So, whatever, we're hoping that this will entice people, number one, thanking them for what they did first semester. Anyone who might be in one of those, let's say they're in the zero to nineteen range from first semester, they might now look at this and say, hey, I want to sub second semester between twenty and twenty-nine days because now, next fall, when I start, I will start every day at one-thirty-five versus one-twenty-five. So again, it's rewarding them semester by semester what they can do or what they would like to do. Some people might say, you know, I want to take this semester off. I want to go on vacation. I want to do whatever. That's fine. When they come back second semester, they know they'd fall within one of those categories based upon the days that they're with us. We have run this by three of our longstanding subs who fill in and teach quite often for us. They were very appreciative of this schedule. They think it honors what they've been doing. First question you'd probably ask is, what's the budgetary side of this? What does this look like? The last two years, for sure we went back and looked, we have been on the positive side of the money that we budget for subs. We have not used that. And we anticipate what this would cost us based upon the last year and a half. We would still be on the positive side of what we budget for subs, even with this pay increase. So the hope would be by implementing this, reimbursing teachers for when they give up a prep period at thirty dollars, hopefully, we'll have less classes that aren't covered, and we feel very comfortable about the learning that's taking place in the classroom every single day to keep this moving forward in both of these models. So, I take any questions, but I wanted to run this by you. We'll send this information out to all of our substitute teachers so they are aware. We'll try to make it as clear as possible when we send this out to them. I think word will travel pretty quickly amongst them as well.
How does this compare, sorry?
After you.
How does the rates that we're paying compare to our kind of other schools in the community?
Yes, great question. So every single year, Bettendorf, North Scott, and us, we always stay very comparable with each other. We've always been about that one-twenty-five to one-fifty-five range. The Evan Board has paid slightly more than us. Just so that they knew what we were thinking and what we were doing. I did share this with both the superintendents of Bettendorf and North Scott. They felt comfortable with what we were doing, and they didn't feel like it was out of line. Because what we don't want to do is, I mean, it'd be nice to draw people from other schools. But again, the Quad Cities is as good as the Quad Cities is if we're all working together. So we're not trying to steal subs by any means. That's why we've always stayed very close together in what we pay our substitute teachers.
My question is, how many teachers do we generally get in a year that start at that one-twenty-five and stay at that one-twenty-five?
So, right now, I could, off the top of my head.
The reason why I'm asking is I'm just wondering if you don't get, if you went from zero to twenty-nine days and just did a one-thirty-five, or you just had like a three-tier there versus, because I, I don't know, I ju- I just think a one-twenty-five, I'm sure it's hard to get people to come in for a hundred and twenty-five.
So we have had approximately a hundred and fifty subs that we have in our district that we will call that will sub for us. What I can tell you, there was in, Leanne, you have the numbers? Thank you.
Yeah, so in that zero to nineteen days, we had a hundred and eight subs last semester. A lot of them on that zero to one-point-five, so just coming in to cover here or there. Twenty to twenty-nine days, we had twenty-one, the thirty to thirty-nine, seven, and the forty to ninety was ten. So our hope is that we get that hundred and eight population to move up one or two tiers to, to help with the coverage that we need.
And the one-hundred and eight, if we went through the data, there was a lot like one day, one day, one day, two days, three days. You know, there was a lot in that lower range. We have our group that's pretty stable that we know. I mean, when I say one-hundred and fifty, that's not one-hundred and fifty every single day.
Can you explain the difference between a retired P V teacher versus a retired teacher that moved here from Michigan with their husband, and why only P V teachers would get the rate person as a general retired teacher?
Well, we've always done there, again, with retired P V teachers, has always been to thank them for when they've been with us for thirty-plus years, where that may be, and they want to stay with us to sub. That has always been our longstanding thank you to them. Because what our goal is, when someone retires, one of our first questions is, great, you're retiring? See Chris Smith and sign up for subbing. That's one of the things we always say all the time because we want our retired teachers to come back and sub for us. So that was always our incentive to do that. With this model, again, if some of our maybe retired teachers from other districts that come to us, they, you know, they could hit that one-fifty-five versus the one-sixty-five. It's really to honor our teachers who retired from us. Yeah.
There are some, there are a couple of other benefits too, such as familiarity with curriculum. So familiarity with the community and familiarity with the curriculum are two, like if we have, it's really helpful if you're in a hard-to-fill kind of spot, like a high school physics teacher comes in, something like that. And you got someone who's got that curriculum expertise and they're able to come in and sub for that person, too. That's just a benefit of being a P V alumni.
The one thing we have done, and I have to go back and double-check, but I believe we have a, when someone retires from us, they have to wait six months before they can come back because they're collecting I P R's a lot of times. So, but if you're not with the bill, with the district, you can come back in four months. It's an insurance component to it. So we have had a longstanding agreement with Bettendorf that if they have a retired teacher and they want to come back and start subbing, we would honor them here, and they will honor our teachers there until they hit that six-month window. Then they come back to us and they get that. That is an agreement we've had between the two districts.
And these days only are for one year, so in the fall, it starts over again at zero.
Every semester. So every semester, we would look at that forty to ninety. And so, like right now, we know who those, Leanne just gave us those numbers, those individuals would fall in that category. So we'll pay them according to this rate all this semester. At the end of the school year, we'll relook at these numbers here, put everybody in those categories, and that's where they would start next year then. No, well, it goes back to zero, well, it doesn't go back to zero. It's always based upon the previous semester number of days that you did. So if you did seventy first semester, and second semester you do sixty, you're still going to fall in that range at the one-fifty-five next year in the fall because you had sixty, which falls in between forty and ninety.
Okay, it's just a previous semester as well.
Correct. Always looking at the last semester. We didn't want to do it for a full year because then that could be, we want to be as fair as possible and give people a chance to keep subbing and wanting to come back.
So, in other words, when you do your last semester and you did eighteen days, all right, and when you come back this semester, you're at one-twenty-five that whole semester, even though you've worked three days to make it twenty-one days, you don't have to move up. You don't move up until the following semester.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not a rolling total. It, it's a, it's a cutoff, specific semester by semester.
Now, the other thing we'd hope is that they could earn more money by doing a four to eight week. They could earn more money by doing a nine week, because if they do that, they get the one-fifty-five or the one-sixty-five, which will also help them for the next year.
Four through eight weeks. So, and these are consecutive weeks, you're saying?
Those, the four through eight and the nine are consecutive weeks, yes.
And they'll know ahead of time that they're doing the four through eight.
Yes, they always do. Because a lot of times what happens is when we find out we have a teacher that's going to be gone, most building principals will know who likes to do long-term subs, or they'll post it, and they'll hear from them, people pretty quickly about, yes, I'll do that four to eight week, or I'll do that nine week. Yes. We have a handful that, more than a handful, that enjoy doing that, but it's not a lot.
But it would be a four-week in the same class?
Yes.
So what if they were, let's say they substitute, you get taught every single day for four weeks, but different classes? They would not be eligible for the four through eight because it's not a long-term four, maybe commitment.
Correct. Yes. Because then they're doing the lesson planning, they're doing the grades, they're doing correcting tests, they're doing all the work that a normal teacher would do versus just coming in and, not just coming in and subbing for a day.
So if someone's in a seven-week commitment, and it runs two weeks long, are we going to back pay them for the gap?
We always do. Yes. We have, the only other situation I can think of that we've had in the past, we may have somebody who does like a five-week long-term sub for somebody, and they're in the same building, also they're going to do like a five-week sub for somebody else, right back to back. And they're planning it. We've also given them potentially that ten-week, they're, they get the nine-week pay at that point. Because they've done nine weeks of long-term subbing.
Okay, and then my other question is related to sort of internal competition, so we just finished talking about compensating teachers for taking slots. Do we have a preference for currently hired teachers over subs? And then have considered the pay balance, and then how much we're gonna pay existing staff in public slots instead?
So if you, number one, are, and our teachers know it, our first thing is always to fill our classrooms with our substitute teachers. Because you're hoping teachers are using their prep period and they want, I mean, it's a coveted time for them to get things done and get prepared for the next class. So again, we believe that the subs, that's a number one, we've also talked about when we call. You would try to fill your special education classrooms, you'd try to fill your regular ed classrooms, specials might be one where you might hold back. Give you an example, if I was a fourth grade teacher and I know the art teacher's gone that day. I will take my kids down to the art classroom and teach art that day, because the specials, you always have a teacher coming down to take their kids to that period. So they'd be available to teach that period, so we've also, how are we filling our subs throughout the course of the day? Now, if someone says, I don't wanna do a special or a cer- certain assignment, we're not gonna say no to them, we'll just find another assignment for them to do. Which could happen as well.
So, I have a question regarding if the, if the position is unfilled in the morning. We automatically will not get a sub, or do we call for subs at that point, or how does that work?
Yes, so if you were to come here and watch Susan beginning at six o'clock in the morning, all she's doing is trying to call people. Or she's splitting jobs, saying, I have a full person, no one's taking it, she'll split it in AM and PM. And also you might find someone grabs the AM, or someone grabs the PM. Or, I'll walk in and I'm saying, Susan, what do you got today, and she's like, I have these three classrooms. I said, who's your specialist, do you have a PE teacher? She's like, yep, I said, switch the PE teacher, call them, and will they take the first grade versus doing PE today? And those are the type of decisions that are being made by her up to the last minute.
Okay, I just got the impression that, you know, in the morning, it's like, okay, now we got that internal.
No, so we've even told principals, let's say Susan can't fill it, can't fill it, can't fill it, principals now find somebody. The principals may come back, hey, we got a substitute teacher all of a sudden in the last minute. Then the principal just go back to those teachers and say, hey, thanks, we appreciate you doing it, but we don't need you today, we've got a substitute teacher who's covering. Yes, yes.
Any other questions from the board?
So, um, I knew you should, if you go back to the flowchart that you had, um, what was done before? How is this a change from what was done before?
Great question, so in the process, I'll take secondary to start with. At the secondary level, we would literally go down and talk to a teacher and say, will you cover this class? Nine times out of ten, they'd probably say, yes, I will, they would cover it, that was it, they were never paid, never reimbursed for that. So that's probably the biggest change, what's different about the elementary level is, we had a tiered system. Where I'll, usually two-tiered, but sometimes may have a three, what happened at the elementary would be. Um, fourth grade teacher's not there today, we may go and say, okay, the teacher librarian might cover for that person today. And we just cancel library time that day, or we might say, a specials teacher may cover that class, and we cancel that specials for the day. That is how we've done it before. Is this, was that easy? Yes, but we also talked about, you're taking away a teacher who's important to us and what they're doing every single day. That's gone for the kids, some kids might really enjoy art, but they're not having art today because the teacher is subbing for somebody else. Again, no reimbursement, but again, they're getting paid for their day, there's no extra pay. So that's probably the biggest difference of what you would see in these two processes.
I, I would add in there a huge, those two, they're, they're doing a fair share of subbing. Um, and, and obviously that just overlaps or procrastinates all of the work that has to be done. Regardless, and so, um, that's, that's a reality, um, that our elementary and all administrators are facing in the school. The, the other piece of this in the elementary world is, it really depends, we, we are nimble. In how we stack our shared um positions that we have for specials. And that's used as a lever to create collaborative opportunities for. And so our specials teachers, we do prioritize to, just to add on to what Brian said at the elementary. We prioritize certain positions on certain days, may be able to be more flexible. Um, an example would be at Bridgeview, you have certain days that I like to refer to as thick days. Or certain days that were thin days, because they had, uh, their specials teachers were there. And when on other days, they might be shared with Cody or with Forest Grove as a two-section building. So it really depends on the day, which of the days it is, in the day one through four location. And our principals have to think creatively and access that tiered system that Brian alluded to. In order to make the best of the circumstances.
And then the final question was, um, is, if it's, did you guys decide to do this because we're having, I know we've talked about how we're having. In general, teacher recruitment, teacher retention, and even substitute teachers, was it sort of done because of that as well? And a solution to, to one of these underlying problems, or has that problem been taken care of, and this is just another incentivization for teachers?
So we track every single day how many classrooms we don't cover. I would say there may be one, sometimes might have three, where we don't have a classroom covered, on a daily basis that can happen. So that was number one, making sure we're always covering, number two, when it came to the substitute teachers. For the last couple of years, we've probably heard, you know, I'm in this class for four weeks and I'm making a hundred twenty-five dollars a day. Or I am subbing for forty days and I'm still making a hundred twenty-five dollars. And I think that was a way to say, to he- we've heard them, but they never get a raise. And it's a way just to say thank you, to appreciate what they're doing, and that was really what this was designed to do. And that's, I, we don't wanna lose subs because of that either. I do know a couple of districts further north of us pay quite a bit, because they're trying to entice others to come to them. Or we haven't seen most of ours leave, but they did voice like, what, can we get something here, increase it a little bit more for what we're doing?
Is this, so, so, because there was always a sub crisis in the past, so is this meant to kind of address that, or has the crisis gotten, gotten better?
It has gotten better, but on the flip side, remember, one thing we're also doing is, we're having our studio and learning professional development days, sometimes during the day. Where we are taking teachers out to bring them together, to learn and to study and to put things together. That also takes subs out, we don't wanna lose those days, so we wanna have people armed and ready to go for those days when we need them.
Uh, Mr. Hyatt mentioned that uh, sometimes administrators will cover these classes. Are we paying administrators to cover these classes?
No, we're not. And we've talked about that, they know that, I mean, they may jokingly ask about that, but it's just one of those things where, no.
Other duties as assigned.
And then do all your other work at home at night.
As, as a building leader, you, you accept that as part of your goal, so.
And hopefully this helps that's not.
Spot on, and that would be like, if you talk, yes, I mean, that was one thing Mike Pekin said when we were meeting with the teachers, like. This could really help me, he's, he's covered a lot of classes this fall, and he's like, this would be great, so hopefully we're not using our administrators. We got teachers who are stepping up wanting to do this.
How long have we been at the one twenty-five, like the starting, I'm kinda hung up on that.
Again, I think when you look at, I mean, and I'll talk to you, when I talk to our, my colleagues, other superintendents. I mean, from a budget standpoint, I mean, it's, it's a substantial chunk of money when you look at the whole total budget. So, I'm hoping this encourages people to move out of that and get to the one thirty-five. It's a fair question.
I think, at the end, I, I, I just wanna say thank you to all of our teachers who up until this time would just voluntarily cover a class. From their, their, you know, prep time, just because, um, they're obviously prioritizing the learning and students. And so, to all the teachers, um, I really wanna thank them for doing that for our district, for our classrooms. I'm happy that we're able to come up with this uh, kind of solution, so that they do get credit for the extra worth of.
And Dr. Kenwisher, you'd mentioned that, you know, how do we come up with thirty or why the thirty? If you take the one fifty-five and divide it by like a six periods when teachers teach, it's about twenty-eight dollars, twenty-nine dollars, somewhere in that range. And again, they're doing a forty-minute class or a thirty-minute class some days, so we just felt it was fair to say thirty dollars. That's also what we pay for curriculum writing, or if a teacher cu- uh, does summer school, we also pay thirty dollars for those sessions too.
Um, Mr. Gray, did you have?
Oh, yes ma'am, and it was kind of addressed over here with the retired PV teacher versus retired teacher. It seemed to be there's a large disparity between one twenty-five and one sixty-five, when you're saying, I could have thirty years' experience in Illinois. Literally cross the river and say, I wanna be your sub, and you're gonna say, the person from PV, that has the same thirty years of experience, gets paid forty dollars in, a day. More than me, although we both have the same thirty years of experience. And I, I understand what you're saying, I, I get where you're coming from, we wanna entice the PV people back. And we're rewarding them for their commitment to PV, but shouldn't we be also rewarding just the commitment to education as a whole? You know, and maybe there's a, a one-tier down for other retired teachers?
So, one of the teachers I did reach out to, that I mentioned, she is a retired teacher from Davenport, so I wanna get her opinion on it. And again, with this, she was one that was very elated, like, thank you for doing this, and she was. She was happy with what the process was gonna look like, so, again, hopefully enticing more people to want to do this. And maybe do a four-week, I mean, a four-week is twenty days, right away, if you do a four-week, that pushes you into that next level up right away after four weeks. And you can still say, I'll do four weeks, or I'll do eight weeks, and I'm gonna take vacation for nine weeks. You know, it's pushed you up to another tier, you can still have some flexibility in what you wanna do with your own schedule, what that looks like. And we'll, and we'll track it, and maybe we make some changes to this and some adjustments, but it's at least a way to change what we have been doing. To thank people for what they have been doing.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I was just wondering, if you add up how many hours we substitute, would that be cheaper to hire maybe two more teachers?
So, it's a very good question, um.
And all that comes with for an employee, but you still give out a lot of money per, per day.
When you take what we pay for a long-term subbing position, you multiply that out, you know, per day of what that cost is. It is still, it's about half the price of what you may pay a starting teacher, or not quite, probably a. It's probably closer to thirty thousand, if you're gonna multiply it out, then, so thirty thousand versus what you may be paying. That's half what maybe a teacher would make, plus insurance, by the time you throw that in there, that's not there. So I think that's where it's still, the other part we always struggle with is, if we hire somebody to be a long-term sub. And they're in one building, what does that also say to the other subs who come there every single day, or a lot? And what they're making compared to somebody else, so it's like, you know, Molly, you are a phenomenal sub. I wanna hire you to be a full-time sub in my building, Debbie, thank you, but I'm not gonna hire you to be a full-time sub. And you're gonna make half of what she's making, I just feel like that can create some animosity among subs in what we're paying them. So, the only time we might see it is, we have done a long-term sub, we've hired them on short-term contracts. Is if they've been, for example, a student teacher with us, who is phenomenal, and it's mid-year, and we're probably gonna hire them, we might interview them and do that. And give them a half-year contract as a long-term sub, still not getting full teacher pay. But then we're looking at them for the next year, when it's a hiring situation, so we have done some of that. But rare is the day where we hire someone to be a long-term sub at teacher rate, because it just doesn't. It creates a divide between people sometimes, great question, we've thought about it many times. And there might be people around this table who think that we should do that sometimes too, but.
But then it would be hard to, to, since you have been to schools, wanting a different type of, you know, math or. PD or art, it'd be hard to say, hey, you're gonna teach eleven-grade physics today and tomorrow you're gonna do art.
Yes, and that's one of the advantages, we talked about our teachers, would be like, especially secondary. If a science teacher is gone, and they know they're gonna be gone, and they're a little sub, hopefully their colleagues will say, I'll pick up your class, because I have the science content knowledge. I'll teach that class for you, especially some of your higher-level courses where they're pretty specialized.
Alright, lots of good discussion, guys, um, if everyone's comfortable, I would take a motion.
I move the board to approve the implementation of the substitute teacher pay and teacher coverage structures.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Ayers. That the board approved the implementation of the substitute teacher pay and teacher coverage structures, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler. Dr. Walkley. Mr. Kenwisher. Mr. Ayers. And Mrs. Druck.
Onto affirmative action plan, Ms. Sin.
Good, good evening, everyone, um, in your board packet, you have a copy of the district's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine affirmative action plan. Which is composed of two parts, our district's data with market analysis and our current practices and future AAP goals and initiative. Which align with our district's five-year plan, annually, we report our data to the DE and the federal government. And I have presented this for you prior to us updating our website, which is required for compliance. And you'll find other districts' websites have this as well. The goal of our plan is to serve as a mechanism for us to continually monitor and address areas of opportunity. And also recognize areas of growth, uh, as we continue to expand as a district. Um, as we look at this, um, you know, again, it is to continuously monitor. The hope is that the alignment with our five-year plan, um, is, is one that allows us to look at. At our district in a different lens and, and do things a little differently with regards to recruiting and marketing and branding ourselves. Um, to get us to, to the goals that we've set over the next five years.
I think as you go through the data, there's some interesting data regarding our retention rates with our staff. And where we are, um, with our one-to-two-year staff, which is a hundred percent, or about ninety percent for all other teachers. Again, that, what we tend to find when those situations, it's because, uh, someone had a child and they wanna stay home with their children. Or a spouse is moving, so they move away with them, could be retirement, what are those, but that's where we're at, about that ninety percent on those. So, take some time to look at that data when you get a chance, and, and review that as you have, but just some good things for us to track. And as, uh, Ms. Sin said, that this is something for us to keep looking at for a five-year window to see how we are doing with our hiring practices. Across the entire district for every position that we have, um, it's just a good mechanism for us to look at and making sure that we are. Expanding our reach to high-quality staff, um, and we're retaining our staff, which is also one of our main goals every single year. When we hire teachers, we say, we wanna hire you, and we want you to retire with us, um, that is our ultimate goal, join the family and be with us. Understanding sometimes people leave for various reasons, hopefully this helps us kinda guide where we're going and what we're doing.
Their retention rates looked really good, I mean, I have, you know, obviously, having a background twenty-five years in HR. I've done affirmative action plans for years as well, um, so their retention rates to me looked really good compared to. Companies that I've worked in in the past, um, the only thing that kinda caught my eye, which I'm sure caught yours as well. Was just making sure that we're continuing to get creative with our recruiting practices to attract those diverse applicants. So that we can increase the diversity of our teachers to better align with the makeup of our student population. Because there's a pretty big difference in the student population versus the, the teaching population, so.
Yeah, my, I have a, a twelve-month, eighteen-month initiative right now, that I've done the, um, market data research. On incoming, uh, education majors, graduation rates, and Iowa, uh, numbers are continuing to go down. And so right now, Ohio, Indiana, Arkansas, three of the major, um, states where their education incoming freshman has increased. University of Chicago has one of the largest, uh, incoming and graduation of male teachers, so that's one of our underrepresented groups as well. So, how am I gonna now brand and market PV in these states, in these schools, to start getting us in front of them? And it's, you know, Brian and I have talked about, is it going on to webinars, you know, doing virtual interviews when they have mock interviews, like, how do we? You know, doing virtual interviews, when they have mock interviews, like, how do we get us now a district where our name is outside of just our area? And our state.
Yeah, and then it becomes a, a additional layer of marketing the Quad Cities as a community to wanna move to and live in. And that's another good opportunity to partner with Betendorf and North Scott and Davenport to market the community for teaching talent. To come here and join the community.
I really appreciate, it came through in the document, this expansion of areas we're advertising in effect to these roles. So we get more applicants and. And appropriate, more diverse staffing, so I, I appreciate the document.
And I think, you know, this year, it's been fun to watch some of our teachers we've hired. Um, you know, a really unique opportunity, we have a young female who's now teaching our welding class for us, which is phenomenal. Hopefully growing some of our female students to want to be inspired to go in that trade as well, or take welding and become a engineer. But you're learning that trade too, so it's, how are we looking across the board of teachers who are role models for our kids? And our kids can see ourselves in wanting to be a teacher, because they're seeing a role model in front of them. That is our ultimate goal, of growing our own kids to come back and be PV teachers. Which I think at last count, we are well over sixty employees who were former PV people, so. It's very exciting, right Debbie?
All right, no motion required on that one. Moving on to Board of Education meeting dates, Brian.
So in your, uh, and probably on the screen, very, very tiny, but in your board materials, you will see our dates. Uh, you'll note again, second and fourth Mondays of each month. We do have, we, in July, we always do one board meeting in the middle of the month there, so you see the date. Uh, I'd also highlight December fifteenth would be a five-thirty start, February ninth a five-thirty start, April twenty-seventh a five-thirty start. And May twenty-sixth is a Tuesday. Again, right now, those five-thirty starts are all tentative, because we believe when we put the activities scheduled for next year. Those are the band concerts and chorus concerts on those bigger nights. So, if it does not happen to be those nights, we'll put the board meeting back to six, but we anticipate that's when those would be for next year. Um, so we'll keep you posted, but really tonight is just to start getting these on the calendars, so we know, so you guys can all start planning. Your schedules accordingly for the second and fourths.
These dates, and I mean, does the six o'clock meeting still work good for everyone? I mean, I'm just kind of putting it out there. Better, is a six o'clock meeting better?
I think I like the six o'clock meeting, it gives enough time for my husband to get home to work, or to meet me at Hopewell. So I can get here, and by thirty, it makes it just a little tighter for us to make that trade off with kids.
And some of the junior high events are at four-thirty, four, four-thirty, so it gives an opportunity to see some of that. You have to be at a meeting, so, all right.
Really have an add, just so you're aware, um, Molly and I visited with, uh, Tammy Drawball this last weekend. Remember, on our February twenty-fourth meeting coming up, we will have our IASB board training that night. Molly's done a nice job talking to Tammy about future trainings that the board could have and what that could look like. So, some of these dates you have here, we may have some additional trainings. Tammy will also encourage all of you to look at, um, putting in fifteen hours of training throughout the course of the year. To get us to, uh, recognized board by IASB, so stay tuned for, it's a little promo for her talking to all of you. And one of our board members, Mr. Kenwisher, might be at fourteen already, so he's one hour away from hitting the fifteen mark, so.
Last year I got the certificate. I got my picture with you.
So the goal is to do that again this year?
Love doing that, yes.
Thank you.
And soon, um, we are going to put the, uh, the school board convention on the, the calendar. So, we kinda have that as a target, and hopefully we can all kinda go as a board this next year, so. Um, a lot of good speakers there, at least, you know, good to experience at least once, so.
I should say thank you to Dr. Wogley for starting that initial conversation with Tammy, she was gonna come a while back.
Yeah, but we couldn't make it happen, so thanks to Nikhil for actually getting that ball rolling for us.
We just had to follow in his footsteps and. All right, well, if there's, I think, two meetings a month, except for those three months, has been working good as far as content. And like the meetings, so, all right, if there's no other discussion or questions, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six board meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Smith, that the board approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six board meeting schedule as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Dr. Wogley.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brackman.
Yes. And then with Mr. Pink, Ling and Smith out tonight, Mr. Strews is gonna cover the December financials for us.
So when I visited with Mike this afternoon, he shared really that, again, as he said before, when he's looked at all these numbers that we have for financials. He feels we're in a good place, very similar where we were a year ago. Um, some things are always different because of timing of when money might be coming in. But overall, he did not see anything that was standing out that would cause concern as to where we are after December.
So, with this water issue in front of the high schools, we're talking about financials, how does that impact?
Great question. So, our deductible is twenty-five thousand dollars for situations such as this. So what we will be doing right now, we've already contacted our insurance company, so they are aware. Should the cost be more than twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll turn it over to our insurance, um, so they are aware that that could be coming. So we have no idea what this cost will be. With the work they're spending out there all day today, it's a probably good chance it might hit that amount, so, cause it's on our dime. It would have been out by the boulevard or by the road, then it becomes Iowa American, their pipe at that point, but it's on our property, so it's, it's us.
Bad luck or weather related?
I don't know the answer to that yet, um, because when I left at about five fifteen from over there, they were, the water is still in the big hole they dug out. They know, they believe the pipe is pretty much just cut in half, so was it cold water or cold weather, or did it just break? Or is it a joint? I think that's what they're trying to figure out right now as to what has transpired.
Yeah, cause if it's frozen pipe, I gotta dig the whole thing out and bury it deeper, which can be way more expensive than twenty-five thousand bucks.
Yeah, it is currently seven feet deep. So I mean, so seven foot was definitely below the thaw line, not an issue, so we don't know. Um, I will tell you this, we will probably spend a little extra money, because, um, I don't know if you ever realize, like, when you walk into school sometimes. We have the issue at Forest Grove, we had, or Hopewell, we have the issue, had the issue at the high school. You put the stoop right in front of the doors, and sometimes they may pack that really well, they may not pack the sidewalks, they always get this heating. That can happen over the years, the ground freezing and everything, so we're gonna try to put extra, um, rock in there. To hopefully eliminate some of that heating over the years, so, that might be an extra cost, we will go into that to fix it.
If not, I mean, signs right now don't point to a construction related.
Zero construction related at all. Um, I think the biggest thing. And you keep adding on, the pipes just get, keep moving to different locations, and shut-off valves are in different locations. So it's been, that's been the challenge today. The nice thing about having multiple additions is that water was pumping out of that. And we were still able to keep the water in the entire school, having no backflow of dirt. Because we have so many loops around the school or different locations that we could isolate that, and we were still good. Um, no issues there, so it was a bonus.
Any other questions regarding monthly financials? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for December as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Director Kenwisher, second by Director Wogley, that. The board accept the monthly financial reports for December as presented, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Dr. Wogley. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel. Mr. Kenwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brackman.
Yes.
Uh, future dates, so Monday, the tenth will be our next board meeting, that'll be an early start due to the District Coral Festival. And then Monday, February twenty-fourth, as Mr. Strews mentioned, we will have our, um, excuse me. We will have training during that session, so it will probably be a little longer, we'll try to make the agenda items less. And, um, so we have, it's not too long for us, but it will probably be a little bit longer meeting that evening. And is there anything else for the good of the order?
Catherine, are you the only one that has choir?
No choir, I only have band.
Does anybody have any choir students this year? Maybe Mr. Hyatt will give the opening remarks then.